It's five o'clock. Our invocation for this meeting will be given by Commissioner Vincent, after which the pledge of allegiance will be given by Community Development Director Scott Lyons.
Our dearly fathers, we bow before thee this evening. We are grateful, Father in heaven, for thy many blessings. Grateful to be gathered as citizens of Box Elder County. Father, we would ask that thy spirit might be upon us this night as we discuss things that do have to do with our county, that we might be kind and understanding one to another and have kind discussions. Father in heaven, that we might come to a consensus of things that need to happen in our county. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for those who protect it, protect our country and who provide the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for thy love and for all that thou doth for us. We ask that thy blessings will be upon us this night, and this is our prayer, and we do this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand up to join me in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of information, for those that would like to be involved in public comment, there's a sign up sheet back in the corner of the room. If you'd sign up and then hand your papers into Tammy, then when the public comment portion of the of the meeting comes, you'll have that opportunity. Okay. Administrative review reports, future agenda items.
How about you want to do approval of minutes?
Yes, I do want to.
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2025.
I've reviewed the minutes and I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we approve the minutes from January 22nd, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now Administrative Review Reports, future agenda items. None? Former agenda items? Emergency management issues? ARPA, LATCF, I don't think we have any. Okay, we're to item number seven, which is Public Interest Presentations and Concerns, and we'd like to invite Chance Baxter to come up. We have a presentation to make. And we would also invite Mark Larson and Richard Day to come forward.
You can.
Hello, my name's Chance Baxter. I'm the General Manager of the Bear River Water Conservancy District, and we are here to recognize Mark Larson and Richard Day for their service on the Board of Directors for the Bear River Water Conservancy District. Mark had eight years of service, and Richard had 19 years. So we have a few presentations here for him or some awards, and I'd like to get a picture with him, so.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, Resolution 2503 for removal of property from an agricultural protection area. Everybody familiar with what's going on there? You know what's going on? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second we approve Resolution 2503.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve Resolution 2503, Removal of Property from Agricultural Protection Area. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, wow, look at that, on the agenda. Sorry, folks, I made a mistake again, but we got it done already. Here we go. Nine B, Fee Waiver for Fairgrounds Building for Conservation District Outreach for Farmers. If you remember, in our last meeting, Jase Farnsworth came and was not on the agenda, but he discussed the plan that they needed. They were having an activity at the fairgrounds and wanted to waive the fee for that. That's what this is about, is a request for a fee waiver for that, the use of the fairgrounds.
And next, we got an email from our fairgrounds director, I think, indicating that they were in support of this idea. So I'd make a motion that we approve the fee waiver for the fairgrounds building used for the Conservation District Outreach for Farmers.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent for a fee waiver for fairgrounds building for Conservation District Outreach for Farmers for Jase Farnsworth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item number C, Resolution 2502, Certifying the Approval of the Interlocal Agreement Between Box Elder County, Bear River Health Department, Cache County, and Rich County, Creating a Multi-County United Local Health Department. Stephen Hadfield.
This is a resolution that we didn't do when we actually adopted the agreement. They want a formal resolution, and as you recall, this is an interlocal agreement to restructure the Bear River Health Department and all of the, all of its divisions beneath it. So this is just a resolution that needs to be adopted, saying that we did that.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we pass Resolution 2502, Certifying the Approval of the Interlocal Agreement Between Box Elder County, Bear River Health Department, Cache County, Rich County, Creating the Multi-County United Local Health Department.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent for Resolution 2502. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, Now We Will Open a Public Hearing on West Corinne Agricultural Protection Area Proposal. For those that would like to be involved in the public hearing, you're welcome to come up, state your name, and you have a three-minute limit on how long you speak, and you're welcome to come up and address the group. You're addressing the commissioners, and there won't be any interaction back and forth. Yep, West Corinne Agricultural Protection Area Proposal, right, it's West Corinne.
I'm Maurice Carter. I live on 7600 West, right across the road from one of these proposed APAs.
Can you, can you pull that a little closer to you so we can get the recording? Thank you.
Okay, okay. I have a daughter who has been putting in a lot of self-help homes, a lot of disability apartments. I think she worked with you, Tyler, here in Brigham. She's dealt a lot with APAs on her property. She's built homes, subdivision right next to a dairy in Rich in Smithfield, but she's put in several subdivisions. So she knows APAs both ways. I have a son who's automating flood irrigation and has a lot of agriculture property and beef cows. He wants an APA on his property. My daughter has mixed emotions about that. My home, as well as nine other homes on 7600 West, pre-existed all of these APA properties, this Caffo Dairy. They were there before. So my concern is for my home and those homes that pre-exist APA property, what the effects will be on those, on those homes. My daughter says APAs are one-sided agreements. She says it benefits the landowner financially and makes his property more attractive. On the other hand, a home gets hurt financially. Their home is not as sellable, and the value goes down. So this one property is 100 feet from my front door. If some agriculture practices that I've seen happened there, my house would not be livable. You know, if they were to come in with a composting operation or a piling manure, manure pit, or piling manure in there so deep that they can't dig it in, the ammonia and the nitrate would escape, that would undate my house. So I'm concerned about that. Now, Mitch Hancock, who's currently running it, has been very respectful of my home and the three surrounding this particular property. He's been very good about it. However, I've watched this property change hands five times. So what happens when the next owner takes over? Is he going to be respectful to me or not? So Kim, Kim suggests where this is such a one-sided agreement.
Your three minutes are up. I'm sorry.
Can I say one more thing? We'd like to have some, some verbiage on the APA that makes this more equivalent for the homeowners and the, and the farm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for your presence. And credit is due to staff because their knowledge, skills, and abilities and work ethic are really good. My name's Dennis Patterson.
Please, please get as close to that microphone as you can, we're recording this, so.
We live, my wife and I, my beautiful wife and I, live adjacent to the Harper Dairy, and we share a boundary. And our, I started Boyd, I started farming in 1971. I remember those, those times very well. I've farmed since then. And a lot of the things that Maurice is afraid will happen, might happen to him, have been happening to our property, okay? Manure pits, effluent ponds. Our daily experience, my wife and I, is they've allowed the alleyway, they've designed the facility, so an alleyway is 6400 West. So we see 40, maybe oftentimes 50 trips a day across the road. And this property supports, is kind of the mothership for some of the properties in the APA. Okay, I love agriculture, but what I see is out of the normal bounds. It's kind of become, for lack of a better word, a toilet for about over 7,000 cows with possibly 500 trips, semi-trips hauling manure a month. In our R20 zone, it is inappropriate for what they're doing. And when we looked into it, and I spoke with staff, Scott in particularly, and they appeared to be outside their zoning. And when, I let him speak to the specifics, but they definitely had a recent violation within the last 30 days. That's a non-compliance, and they may have complied with that now. I'm following up on that. There still is non-compliance. County Code 5-2-050 states no more than two entrances per 100, 100 feet on a county road, on any street in the county. They have 20, both sides of the road, and there's traffic, it's a terrible public safety hazard. The feed trucks have to back down the road five times every time they feed, three, four times a day. They pull onto the road, they can't pull through, so they back out. It's quite a, we have video of it, I'm happy to share that. It's public safety hazards. There's vehicles across the road daily, all day, in the dark, without any lights, without trailer lights, without, you know, possibly maybe even not driver's license. I'm not sure how that is. I do know I've been struck by them in the past, and they were not, they didn't have driver's license.
Thank you, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us this time. I live on 6400 West, and so this.
Your name, please.
My name is Iris Mayberry, sorry. And I'm very concerned about it. I'm concerned because last year, there were so many trucks that went down that road, and some of them were going a lot faster than 30 miles an hour, and sometimes there was this plume of dust. Well, I ended up in the hospital in intensive care for two weeks, and I'm not sure if it's because of that or not, but that's never happened to me before. And so, and I have a grandson that has special needs, and we're outside with him every time he's outside. But sometimes those trucks, they come so close that bits of asphalt fling into my yard and my property. So before I mow, before I do anything, I'm having to go along my edges to, to pick up those asphalt chunks because they're going so fast on that road. And they don't seem to care that there are children that live on that road as well. And I have a pickup truck, and I park it pretty close to, to the beginning of the mouth of my driveway. And the day I came home from the hospital, one of the windows were shattered. So I don't know how it happened, it's never happened before, but these trucks were just dreadful and horrible, just going down that road with no concern about children on that road and about anything else. Now, my granddaughter, she does 4H, and she has her sheep by, on my property when she does that. And she and a friend would walk down that road and back. Well, last year, they didn't do sheep because that road was so bad and because nobody was paying attention to these two girls that are walking their sheep for 4H. And her mother said, no, that road's too dangerous. And so, things like country pursuits is the reason why I bought the property in the first place. I love living there, I love my neighbors, but I'm concerned and I'm worried about just, there's no, there's no care. And we get people, we get trucks going down that road, and every, oh, gosh, at least once a week, we're picking up cans of beer, empty beer cans and beer bottles that are along that road. It's, it's, there's no care taken, and that's why we're concerned about some of the farming hands and some of the people that drive on that road so fast. I would love to see restrictions and, and, you know, how fast you can go on the road.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Lisa Marble. I live in West Corinne, and I am a neighbor to the West Corinne Agricultural Protection Area Proposal that's being talked about. My comment about the previous comments, there, a lot of them are true, but they have no bearing on the APA itself. Those practices are being carried out at this time without the APA. The APA actually protects the farming community to be able to farm and do the things we want to be able to continue doing. Those are all problems and issues with trucks that come through Salt Lake City and bring other biohazards, and there's a lot of trucks in the area, but I don't believe that is affected by the APA. I could be wrong, but I think that's just practices in the community, and the APA sounds like it's just protecting land to be able to continue to farm, and I support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Hannah Freeze. I'm a Box Elder County resident, and I also work for the Utah Department of Agriculture and Food, and I'd like to speak this evening in favor of the ag protection area. As you are all aware, our agricultural industry is under immense development pressure everywhere you go in the state. Box Elder County is still, fortunately for us, one of the largest agricultural production counties in the state, and it's something that I think we're all very proud of. As we look at this dairy and the impact that it has on the Bear River Valley where we live, and a lot of us farm, without this dairy, it would be very detrimental to many producers in the area. It's a huge driver of the commodities that we grow and the crops that we produce. And as you know, very often, we are losing more and more dairy farms that are moving, the cows are leaving, dairy farms are selling out, and those properties are becoming developed. And so I would like to speak in favor of this ag protection area that is extremely important to protect our way of life, to protect the agricultural industries that we have here in Box Elder County, and to be able to allow our farmers to do the things that they need to do in order to feed all of us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, my name is Curtis L. Marble. I own and operate C.L. Marble Farms. I own property that is adjacent to this. I am for this proposal. The only regret I have is that I'm not doing it with him, because, because the agriculture area we live in has been agriculture for a very long time, and there are going to be things done in the form of agriculture that may be offensive to some, but it is a way of life for the farmers in the valley in Box Elder County. So again, I wished I would have been on this, and I will be addressing this commission very soon to do this with my property, because I want whoever takes over my farm to be able to farm without problems of people that have moved in and find it offensive to live there once they live there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody else that would like to voice their opinion? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to close the public hearing on the agricultural protection area proposal in West Corinne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, on to the next item, 10A, Community Develop, Public Hearing for Disposal of Surplus Property 03-082-0067. So we need to open that public hearing for those that would be concerned about surplus property disposal.
I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Vincent, seconded by Commissioner Perry for a public hearing for disposable, disposal of surplus property 03-082-0067. Scott, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about that property?
Happy to give some background. So this property is located on the north end of Brigham. I don't, what is the address for the property? Yeah, it's right there at the North 40. 10,000 North, 450 West, approximately. The parcel is small in size, it's .05 acres, so about 2,000 square feet is all. It was, the county received it by tax deed, I believe, in 2014, and it's been in, in the county's possession since then. The adjacent property owner approached the county commission regarding the sale of this property. I was directed by the commission to put it through the surplus property disposal process. We began that process, which essentially determines the value of the property, takes it through the planning commission for a recommendation. The planning commission's review essentially looks at whether it has any effect on the county's general plan, the county's land use code, or any other applicable ordinances. And the county, the planning commission found that it, there is no effect on any of those things. Those documents don't address county-owned land within or other jurisdictions where this is within Brigham City municipality. So with that said, the next step in that surplus property disposal process is a public hearing at the county commission level, hence the hearing this evening. And then following the hearing, the county commission can make a motion, if so desired, to enact that sale. We have a deed prepared. Attorney's office has had an opportunity to review that deed, and other than that, the, I guess I can touch on that after the public hearing, the final procedures, so. But that, that is the history of that parcel and how it got to this point.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Anybody in the audience that would like to address that issue in this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to close the public hearing on the disposal of surplus property 03-082-0067. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, the disposal of this surplus property, the manner is explained by Scott line of.
Hang on just a second, Scott wanted to explain something.
Just, just want to make sure that we stayed on the record, the sales price is $1,750, and that the county will hold the deed until, to ensure that the payment clears the bank. Once the payment's cleared, then the county will be the one responsible to record that deed that transfers that property to the new owner.
So I have a little question. You would think a half an acre would sell for more than that?
It's not even half an acre.
Point zero five.
Oh, point zero, okay.
It's a little sliver of land that nobody could do anything with. I actually have spoken to them, and there's actually, it'll help them solve some of the water issues and things like that. So I would make the motion that we approve the, the disposal of the surplus property 03-082-0067 for the 1750, as explained by Scott Lyons, and let us take care of getting it recorded, and it just gets it back on the tax rolls, and it actually is the smartest thing for the homeowner and for the county to do at this time, rather than a little teeny sliver.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent for the sale of surplus property 03-082-0067. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Scott. Okay. No, the one was.
Okay, yeah, it's been printed twice.
Yep. One was public hearing, the other one was actual motions. Okay, now we have 11A, Box Elder County Jail Policies and Procedures Contract. Sheriff Potter.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Kevin Potter, sheriff, and I've got Riley Reiser, my jail commander, with me in case you have any detailed questions. But the, what we're asking you to sign is, the Utah Sheriff's Association created with Gary Deland, who's the lawyer who did this, about almost 30 years ago, he, they created standards about how we run our jail to make sure we're following the laws and all the rules, taking care of the care and custody of inmates. But what they've never been able to do, or didn't do, is write our actual policies. And we, we've been writing our own policies, but there's some, we found some reasons to want to, it would be way better if we had a legal expert be doing these policies. There's a lot of reasons for having, and most jails hire Gary separately to do the policy. So that's what, that's what we're asking the county to do for us. And he's a, he's a, he's a corrections, he travels across the country and does, is an expert witness for corrections. We're lucky, but he lives in Utah, and he loves the Sheriff's Association, and he gives us a really good price, so we're lucky to have him if we can get this signed.
So this is a contract to engage him, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it'll be five years, $10,000 a year.
I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Box Elder County Jail Policies and Procedures Contract, number twenty-five dash eleven, as presented by the sheriff.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent, seconded by Commissioner Perry, to approve Box Elder County Jail Policies and Procedures Contract, twenty-five dash one-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Okay. We now have item twelve A, Set Up Payment Plan for Delinquent Tax on Parcel Number Oh-three dash oh-nine-seven dash zero-zero-zero-four. Tanner Bessinger.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Are you Tanner?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today.
Yeah, I need to know who you are.
Tanner Bessinger.
Okay, thanks. Need to know for the record, so.
Absolutely. And I'm here to discuss an urgent matter regarding my grandparents' property taxes. In two thousand twenty, my grandparents were relocated to an assisted-living facility due to health concerns, and I took over managing their financial affairs. Unfortunately, during this transition, their property tax payments were overlooked, and they have not been paid in quite some time. Recently, we were notified of the outstanding balance, and their home is at risk of going up for tax auction. My grandparents rely almost solely on social security. Between their living expenses, medical bills, and other financial commitments, their budget is quite constrained. We deeply regret this oversight, and I take full responsibility for not addressing the tax payment sooner. We are committed to resolving this issue and have devised a plan to make monthly payments towards the outstanding balance. While the lump sum is beyond our immediate means, we believe that a manageable monthly payment is a practical solution, and so I kindly request your consideration in allowing us to set up a payment plan so we can make regular contributions towards clearing the tax delinquency. Your understanding and support in this matter will greatly alleviate the financial burden on my grandparents and ensure the home stays within the family. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions.
Hang on a second. Sean, are you familiar with this? Do you want to come up, too? Well, we'll have every, all the players that know what's going on here, so. So Sean, go ahead and stay here, Tanner. Yep. So Sean, is this, have you done this before? Is this something you've entered into, payment plans?
We don't generally enter into payment plans.
Okay. So what's your plan, Tanner?
So with the, since they rely primarily on social security, we can at least contribute up to two hundred dollars a month towards the outstanding balance.
What is the outstanding balance?
Eleven thousand, four hundred, ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents as of the tenth of this month.
So it's five years long, huh, type thing? And that'll take how long to take care of?
Two hundred bucks or, it's gonna take a long time.
Good thing. You have any questions?
Well, yeah, the only question I'd have, and whether it's Mr. Bessinger answered it, or Sean, if we were to allow, if we were to put this into a payment plan situation with that, I guess one of the caveats would be if they were to pass away, or if that home were to sell, if it were to go out of your grandparents' name, I wouldn't want to keep it on that payment plan. So I would, if I was gonna go down that road and say that's the case, I would say, we could put a payment plan as long as it is owned by them, the moment that it transfers ownership, that, that cost has got to be incorporated in that. I'm not gonna have somebody sell it and say, well, we're just done and walk away. They need to pay that back.
To become current at that date.
Yeah, it had to become current. So it'd have to figure out, I don't know if I'm ready to vote on it today, I'd almost rather have the county attorney's office come up with something that we could put into place if we were going to do something like that.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that, too, and also, the two hundred dollars a month with eleven thousand dollars, I, I think that as we look at that payment plan, maybe, tier plan, as it goes along, that it increases somewhat, but I do think, I agree, Commissioner, I think we need to have our legal look at that and-
Is there, I know, is there any way to do, or maybe you say, stay current here, from here, and then put the money toward a payment, because that's the other concern I have, is if we don't make ourselves, have we paid property taxes now? Are we still delinquent at this point? Just delinquent, I guess is one of my questions for Sean.
Two hundred dollars would barely cover the next year's tax.
Two hundred dollars a month, yeah. Right.
And is this, a question for this property, is it, is it qualified, or would it qualify for circuit breaker, I guess is my other question?
Can I ask if the home is vacant?
It is not.
Who's living in the home?
We have family members who are currently living there to take care of those.
And consideration for the circuit breaker would include all of the income of all the people living in the home?
That's true, right.
Those people that are living in the home, are they paying rent?
Yes.
And the rent goes to?
The rent goes to a side account that we have set aside for them for any emergencies.
For your grandparents, you mean?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy to relook over finances and come up with our larger monthly contribution. I'm happy to do that.
Well, I think that's, Commissioner Lee, I think that's one of, Commissioner Perry, I think that's one of the things that he's talking about is that with, if you could do something like that, and maybe we could review it and-
There's the referral program, but it, this probably would not qualify for the referral program because it is delinquent on its taxes if it were not, they're gonna defer the taxes until they change their names, but this probably would not qualify.
That's, that's the plan that they put in place with the state, right? That if they're over the age of seven, yeah, but they'd have to come current before they could put that plan in place. Is that right? Okay. So my motion would be to table it maybe till the next meeting and work with the county attorney's office to see if there is a possibility of doing this, and we hate to bring you back, but we probably need to have some time to look at our options, rather than just say we're gonna do something today.
Of course.
Yeah, maybe, maybe in that time, you can look at what's in that account, figure a way to maybe take some extra out of that in order to, you know, make it to where it's not two hundred dollars a month, but it's actually making a difference, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
So, but I'll second that motion by Commissioner Perry.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to table. Until next meeting, this delinquent tax on parcel number oh-three dash oh-nine-seven dash zero-zero-zero-four. Allow Tanner Bessinger to review and come back.
I do need to make a comment before we do that. I'd make the motion that we freeze the penalties. I'd make a motion not only, I want to refer, go back on my motion and say, table it, but I'd also make a motion that we don't continue to assess penalties while we evaluate.
There will be another additional penalty next year.
Okay. That's all, I just want to make sure that we weren't-
There is interest.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we're not billing on our problem while we spend two weeks trying to evaluate this. That won't happen, then, another interest?
It's just the interest.
The penalty comes once, it's a one-time thing.
Okay.
But the interest is there.
And how, and how, well, so can we forego the interest for the next two weeks while we evaluate it? Is that appropriate?
I mean, I think that, I, we know what the interest was as of the tenth.
Right.
I'd be glad to hold that conscious if we make a decision.
That's what I would prefer. That would be my motion, is we table it, tell the next meeting, and hold that, at that level, so if we can work this out, we're not adding compounding to the problem if we can start to get payment.
There is some interest, though. There is no compounding.
Okay. That's my motion, then, and I-
I'll second that.
Okay, we have an amended motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our, oh, that's not, thank you for coming, Janika.
Just one more quick.
You can tell I want to get out of it, no, just kidding. Okay. Human Resources, Early HSA Agreements, Janika Stander.
Yeah, so due to employee confidentiality, I can't release the name in a public meeting, but we do have an employee who has a medical necessity to have the second half of his HSA employer payment made early, so that's what I'm here requesting.
And we've done this before.
Correct. There is an agreement that if the employee leaves before the end of, before the payment would have been paid, they have to pay it back, so.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the early HSA funding.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the early HSA agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now is the time in the meeting for public comment. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county commission only. This is a time to be heard. There will not be a back-and-forth dialogue with the Commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the county commission. With that mind in mind, our first person is Deanna Hardy.
Okay, Deanna Hardy, Brigham. It is stated in the media over and over again that our form of government is a democracy mob rule. While it is true that we elect our representatives democratically, we are not a democracy, but a republic. Founding Father John Adams stated that democracy never lasts long. It soon wastes, exhausts, and murders itself. There never was a democracy that did not commit suicide. Founding Father James Madison stated, democracies have ever been spectacles of turbulence and contention, have ever been found incompatible with personal security or the rights of property, and have in general been as short in their lives as they are violent in their deaths. Fisher Ames, who was a prominent member of Massachusetts Convention that ratified the Constitution for his state, termed democracy a government by the passions of the multitude, or no less correctly, according to the vices and ambitions of their leaders. Democracy's majority rule is one of the intermediate stages towards tyranny. A democracy form of government is a step right before communism. Allowing a group of citizens or mob to tell a property owner how many allotted acres they are permitted to sell is not correct. The citizens or mob do not own the property or pay property taxes for the owner's property. Should a county or city government make a general plan in which they take a map of the county or city and draw a line on an individual's property, which will either increase or decrease the value of the property? No, this would also be not correct and very unconstitutional. The value of the property is decided by the owner and buyer. This is America, where property rights are sacred and to be guarded. The only time government should be allowed to intervene is when the property owner is doing something immoral or dangerous that would cause harm to his fellow neighbors. The Box Elder Committee of Liberty petitions this commission to remember your oath of office and protect the rights of the property owner from mob rule or a democracy form of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next one is Hannah Fries, and I think Hannah left.
Yeah, she did.
Okay. All righty, the next thing on our agenda, we have a closed session that we need to-
Litigation.
It's both, I mean, one is litigation and the other one is criminal confidence.
Okay, so I'd make a motion we go into closed session for discussion of litigation and also issues of employee.
Do you want to do the warrant register and stuff register?
Yeah, we're pretty well done with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm the last one to sign, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are done.
You're gonna-
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry and seconded by Commissioner Vincent to move into closed session to deal with litigation and employee issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going into closed session. Thank you.
Hello, young lady. You know we better than that.
We are back.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's moved, and seconded, we adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, I got these folks here, maybe, I don't know, a place to, there's HB two-six-